...of kindness. It's very important that my husband be able to sing on First Street. It has been a gift far beyond any city could offer. I don't know if you realize, but there are very few cities that offer that. With amplification, he needs it. Not only does he need it, but we all need it. Because when we're out there singing, he moves people's lives. He takes away the pain from the past. I never tire of being by his side and watching the changes made in his life. And I can't thank someone enough for that. I'm concerned that with the change of mayor and a change of staff, that that would change. Because it was Mayor Roosevelt when we should have a stranger to us, a second grader led us to her, a second grade student that had met her. She had visited his classroom, led us to him. She had spent five minutes with us and went to Lyra Bowman and the city attorney and said, "Just because one person complained, does that mean we need to have a city ordinance to sing and install it? No, Jerry can sing with amplification where he'd like." But it could change with a different mayor. Debbie MC, when even after given permission, people complained about him singing on First Street, Debbie said, "Please let the person know. Let me know. You don't need to know who it is. Go ahead and call me." Because we need to put a stop to this.
(Inaudible) We really appreciate your thoughts. Jerry, you've heard me for hours. We've had the pleasure of responding several times here, and we really thank you. So, what are you saying?
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
(Applause) 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 (Applause)
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, we have some changes coming up, and I surely hope this does not change. I always enjoy watching him on First Street, and he puts a smile on everyone's face. So, I wanted to ask the council if they would consider opening discussion at some point about covering the council meetings with closed-circuit TV on the cable access channel. I know it's been brought up like a year ago. So many people would like to be a part of this, but they just can't get out. It's a pretty simple process to maybe look into it. Would you have a cable access channel? And then, um, okay.
We have discussed it before inside my... Okay, is that it?
Actually, no. So, we are gonna have some changes. CPR Snohomish is gonna be sponsoring a candidate debate on January 7th. It'll be at breakfast at the Garden City Grange, starting at nine o'clock on January 7th. We'd like to invite the entire community. The debate would actually start at 10:00. Be an hour of just getting to know your neighbors and kind of seeing what's going on, and then we'll have a couple-hour debate once we know who's running for the upcoming election. January 7th from 9:00 to noon at the Garden City Grange.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Mr. Wild, you know, he resides in the city.
No, I asked him, Mayor.
You're directing your comments to me, and then I can direct comments to other people who respect.
No, I'm directing it to Zach Wild. Where is your address, Zach Wild? Where do you reside?
Zach doesn't have to answer.
Pardon?
Zach doesn't have to answer.
I wonder why?
Well, Mr. Clay, you could call Zach up during the day. He has cell phones on the city website. You could email him during the day.
I did so across Lake Stevens, Mayor.
Be quiet. Council's not a time to come and bully either council or staff. You can take care of these questions during the day. We're not having a bully session here. Thank you.
Who's the bully?
Yeah.
And we're not having comments allowed from the back of the... I'm done. All right, thank you, Arliss. We appreciate that. All right, so we're gonna go to our action items.
Wait a minute.
Somebody else wants to speak?
No, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come forward.
Please, have an open government transparency. Not just dialogue with the citizens. Okay, what do you need this? Snohomish. Can I speak for three minutes? Thank you. I have a problem. Why don't you go ahead? Not my time. Go ahead. What do you want?
No.
Oh.
(Inaudible)
Okay, anyway, we've got some comments from the public here, Tac. Maybe I appreciate that you could tell them to keep the personal attacks to themselves.
I know.
You're down half a minute.
All right, anyway, it won't take long. I just wanna follow up on Mr. Clay's comments about the, you should recuse yourself from voting on these things because, Madam Mayor, in the Tribune, or the Herald, I believe, last week, you said you were going to file for mayor and that you wanted a city administrator at 152,000 years. Let's face it, she said there's nobody in Snohomish that's professional. They're amateurs, quote amateurs, that can run for mayor. So, on record, are you going, do you plan, consider running for mayor?
I don't have to answer.
Well, you don't have to say that, right?
I don't have to answer you.
You don't have to answer anything. I know.
Transparency.
You could call me after in the day and ask me. It's not during the afternoon.
Oh.
Yes. Well, this is Clay.
Does need to do some clarification about his address. He was confirmed yesterday that he will walk in his last Snohomish address. Check of the county auditor records as of today showed that his voter registration record is still the address of his last Snohomish address. It's confirmed today that the house that Mr. Wild purchased in Lake Stevens back in April of 2016 has a stipulation on it that requires him to reside at that house. So, somewhere, some along the way, I think we need some clarification. Perhaps not now at this moment, but we do need to clarify. Thank you.
John Cartack, 714 Fourth Street, Snohomish. Today in Snohomish Superior Court, I attempted to get a temporary injunction to put on the brakes on the government's intention to change the entire form of government in one single evening tonight. As we tried our best to navigate through the process without the benefit of an attorney, a critical part was overlooked while we had served papers to all who were in interest, of interest. I didn't come prepared with an affidavit proving as much. So, because I couldn't very well reschedule another court appearance before tonight's council meeting, there was no purpose in asking for another court date. I simply had no choice but to have the case dismissed. The following is from a declarative statement in my petition for injunction. Due to the expedited timeline that the Snohomish City Council is rushing forward with for the purpose of defining the city's entire change of government form on one day, the very day after the ballot measure calling for this change of government has been certified, I am praying the court to allow an emergency temporary injunction to go into effect immediately. As this matter currently stands, Snohomish City Council is scheduled for December 13th, 2016, as today, to set the city's executive salary based on inaccurate informational studies attached to your end, create a new city administrator position which could potentially exceed the sovereignty of our future elected mayor's duties and abilities, and to unnecessarily rush the upcoming mayoral election so that yet unknown candidates are only granted a total of eight days to make their decision to run for the office of mayor and to file prior to a December 21st deadline. According to the Snohomish County Elections Director Garth Bell and the Snohomish County Auditor Carolyn Michael, these action items do not need to be rushed. This expedited timeline created by the Snohomish City Council unnecessarily rushes through a very complex change of government form without enough information, thought, time, and a large citizen input. Thank you.
Mr. Cartack, so can you make your statement about this? And so I don't, I would ask you if you speak on the action items, please, not repeating. Are you through?
Yes, I'm through.
Anybody else's citizen comments? I was not coming in general. Okay, I'm closing citizen comments and we're going to work through our agenda items. Our first action item is a term of new special election resolution for 1555, starting with staff reports in that in the district.
Thank you, Mayor Roosevelt. This item is a follow-up from the City Council's September 15th, a previous city audit, and denied the schedule for action. That was a discussion, important council resolution. His adoption of resolution 1555, this sets a special election for the position of mayor. Washington state law, that was the process regarding the use of special election on the ballot measures requiring the reorganization of the city's formal government. The next special election date available is February 14, 2017. The deadline for resolutions to be submitted to the county auditor's office for ballots on this election date is December 60. It appears that state law requires both a primary and runoff election for this mayor position regardless of how many candidates may file for election. The February 14 election date would be a primary election in which the top two candidates will be selected by the voters, and a runoff election would occur on April 25. At this point, there is no specific information regarding the city's potential cost for the election. However, we have been informed by the auditor's office that three certifications may be sharing the cost of this $50,000 election number cost will be reported based on primary votes from the voters. That is the end of the standpoint we have, and happy to receive any questions you may have in the progress of the city's office. If all of your, having to deal with any questions, maybe invite, invite the certification of those actions.
(Inaudible) just council member mail.
Okay, very exact. So, my question, I've read the RCW is on, when you spoke of whole elections, if something's approved, there's a 90 to 180-day window going to the general election. It's a little less specific with the fall and time period for special elections. My question is, the proposition hasn't been certified yesterday. What is the window by which the election of the mayor must be held?
The window applies if the general election can be utilized for the election of the mayor. For a special election, the window is not, as I agree with the statute, a relevant part of the statute. Mr. Grass, will you help develop that?
Correct, rest of the 3502, my own, sets two different pathways depending upon whether a change of government is in one of those years where there is a general election related to the dis ballots. And that window is if you were in the 90 to 180-day period type, that general election and the scheduled process is consistent with that general election. We are not in that 90 to 180-day window of general election. So, the second part of the statute says that you implement the process by using special elections. And there are special elections set up on February, April, special election could occur in August, and you can call and request a special election that runs at the same time as the general elections. Or dates could be followed by the next calendar year election.
So, if I understand you correctly, would this specify the election of a mayor to coincide with council member elections next to the member, subsequently there would be a primary event in August?
Correct. As it relates to that window, it ties it with the general election. In this case, it says the next is part of the language in the statute. In the alternative, there is a tie to the general election, the word next is tied to the statute. So, there appears to be discretion by the council as in the white day to get the both were going to primary election. And then that and then when the general election on the position occurred. The two are supposed to happen simultaneously. On the fifth day A for primary, and then on the day B for the general election, that would be made for the primary election here in later day, except anyone having several of them. The next election day could be the general election.
I hope you put it well.
That was a lot of words. Only just, maybe put final point on the question. Could be called for the primary for the mayor of election in August?
Yeah, August.
It appears good. Okay.
Yes, Councilor Clay.
As of now, we know in the February special election, that there's two other entries on the ballot. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And so we'll, we'd potentially be splitting the cost on that. However, we would wait until another date. We don't know whether or not we would be bearing the entire cost or we would be splitting the costs.
I have no idea what the other items would be on the election.
Right, so we could be bearing the entire cost. So, Mr. Grass, I was under the impression that we really were looking at this 90-day window and that February was important and that August is way more than 90 days from certification of this Prop 2.
I do not agree with the 82, my own, to establish a 90 to 180-day window, except in the circumstances where there is a general election. We are either altering the line of the statute, which does not have a rule of exception, which just quickly requires that you proceed with a special election, as I said. Election one dictates the day of the election, and two.
Right. So, excuse me, I was confused of what we just told Council on the count, and we could wait until it's done. And I just recognize that we're not the rate laws. We need to go February and April.
I did not say that. It said that you have four potential for election dates in 2017. February, April, I believe, if it's in August and November. It is the council's discretion in Florida to get the election. The first date that is picked dictates the date of the second date.
Yeah.
So, the first date could be February, which means the general election would be April. First date selected is April, and then the next election would be August, after the first date selected is August, then the final election, albeit a special election occurring at the same time as the general election.
This is very interesting, because it doesn't align with the information that I thought we had previously.
(Inaudible)
Okay. 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 That's fine. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, then let's open it to on this roll table, 1555, which is setting the mayor's special election.
Good evening, Morgan Davis, Snohomish. And please don't interrupt me while I'm speaking. Anyway, it's a slam dunk now. You just heard it from Mr. Grass, Rob. If you went with the August-November scenario, it would cost the taxpayers zero because you all, in August, you have to have four council members already on the ballot. And as you know, having an extra election on the same ballot is no incremental cost, just like the fireworks. It didn't cost anything for the proposition two. So, that's a slam dunk. Absolutely no cost in August. And in the general, where you have a bigger turnout, you're always, you're bound to have something on the ballot. So, it's a win-win for the taxpayers and people that would like to move this deliberately instead of jumping into a decision one day after the election was certified. So, it's a slam dunk. August and November. I don't understand why you want to spend up to $50,000 each election in February and April, spending, worst-case scenario, $100,000 when you can get one free and you'll have months for a campaign and so the citizens can sort out the platforms of each candidate. And I still think, Madam Mayor, you should excuse yourself because you indicated you would probably put your hat in the rain, and you shouldn't be voting on this because you're, you're gonna be voting for something to self-serve yourself in your own campaign. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Anybody else like to speak on the election 1555, the date for the first, the special elections for the mayor?
John Cartack, 714 Fourth Street. I just want to reiterate that, that we're saving $100,000 by using the regular elections that are already set up. And I don't think that many people are gonna see any reason for a rush through this. We have all admitted that this is a big change in government and changing from an executive who is an employee of the city to an executive who is a politician, it's gonna require a lot of people thinking and examining, observing the campaigns that different people are gonna run. And allowing more time will allow people who are qualified to consider running. It'll give them more time to make their decisions. And I just don't think that most people are gonna want this rushed through. Thank you.
Mr. Cartack. Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Clay.
I want to reiterate that this council will be inadequate and will learn notice to the public, no transparency. This council is preparing tonight to set in place ordinances that will dictate how our town will operate under a strong mayor form of government. Now, the same council unanimously voted against the will of the people when we brought forth the petition to put on the ballot proposition two, which bring back a strong mayor into this town and rid us of the city, no, maybe we're not gonna. But I think that you've got two issues here that make whatever vote you have here tonight invalid. One is Zach Wild does not live in the city of Snohomish. Any vote by Zach Wild with this council will invalidate any vote. And the other thing is, what I just previously stated, this council unanimously voted against will of the people to bring forward the strong mayor. So, for you tonight to vote to set up that form of government is not just ridiculous, it is unethical, it is immoral. So, take that to heart because the citizens of this town are paying attention and they're watching you. And you are up for election next year. Thank you.
Mr. Bethany, want to speak?
Please. Yeah, thank you to the city attorney for some clarity on this. I think we all appreciate that. That definitely puts a different coat of paint on things. I would be myself one to try to maybe have the primary in, say, August.
Yeah.
And then, the primary in April, maybe, and then the general in August, or one more. But, I mean, I just wanted to say thanks for some clarity in the dates so people can make some good decisions. And it would be nice that whoever's gonna run had enough time to set up their platform because if you're gonna run for mayor, I mean, that's a major change in somebody's life if they're just a nine-to-fiver. So, yeah, later than sooner would be great. Thank you.
Hi, Whitney. 560 St. Chris, Snohomish. I just want to, I don't have any idea of the dates because I found they were kind of engraved as known before. Would like to believe that they came for February, April, and also some possibility of citizen input. The only thing I'd like to comment on is that I respect or disagree with the gentleman that came up and said that you guys should recuse yourselves. There's precedent for that. And besides, you are the people who were duly elected to this position to make just these decisions. We are a public, republic. We're not in a position where we have citizens basically governing ourselves as not how our founders intended us to be. And so I think it's reckless to think that we can just do the city council process and just have a bit of some other process just because, you know, some of the like results. That's what I think.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
From David, I just think. Good evening, Angela Shaddick, 507 Ninth Street. This is my first city council meeting. Thank you. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I feel compelled to do so in light of the new dates that I presented for. new dates that I presented forward. This is a huge change for our city, a 40-year change. I don't see any reason why the process of this can be rushed, or very good for our whole community. I would also, Mayor, if you could ask the lawyer of her house, if Mr. Wild does not reside in Snohomish, that's his question that has come up tonight, is it valid for him to be making any votes tonight as well as by the lawyer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Anybody else have to speak on this issue of Resolution 1355, setting the date for... Oh, hello.
Hi. My name is Eda. The three marketing handle for...
Able for Dallas, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't have time to speak to the lady, but I remember the day I was working on this law, that we do have time, and it's very important that everybody takes the time and make sure that they're doing everything that's best for Snohomish and making these decisions. And if you rush it, we just think we don't consider things, and that could ultimately hurt someone's life. And that's not all what anybody wants to happen by voting yes for a strong mayor of government. But I hope that all of you keep that in consideration when you make your votes. Thank you.
Anybody else have to speak? Mr. Rambler?
I just wanted to say that the voters who voted yes on Proposition 2 are kind of expecting that their ballot should be honored in the manner and the way they describe this, that the change would be beneficial for them. And if you rush things and you don't, and our party delivers it, and you try to do this too quickly and make mistakes, not consider enough public input, you're going to lose it. So, since you are not obligated, if you rush this, you could really demonstrate coercion and not just deliberation, but thoughtfulness and consider that the majority of the voters have a point. Hey, football's a little, it was a touchdown, a small one, but a touchdown, that a thoughtful consideration was still on there would have been a big help. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Anybody else have to speak?
Good evening, councilmembers, Paul Kaptansky, 103 Sun Press Drive, City of Snohomish. Just what I'd like to first say is to you, council, to you staff and the people here, happy holidays. This is...